Everyone, I'd like to call to order this City of Camarillo Planning Commission meeting, a normal meeting of October 20, 2020. Could we have a roll call, please, Mr. Secretary?
Yes, thank you. Chairman Etzel?
Here.
Chairman Espinosa?
Here.
Commissioner Vandermeulen? Beverly, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm here.
Okay, Vice Chair Talmadge?
Here.
And Chairman Murphy?
I'm here, too.
Okay, thank you.
Makes us all here, and it's great to see everyone. That brings us to item three, the flag salute, and Vice Chair Talmadge will be leading us this evening in that. So, Vice Chair?
It's a great honor to do the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Would you all please place your hand on your heart, or if you're a veteran, feel free to salute and follow after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty as for all. Thank you.
Thank you. So that brings us to item four on our agenda, which is the review and approval, hopefully, of the minutes of the most recent meeting that took place July 14, 2020. If you've all had a chance to review those minutes, are there any comments?
I would make a motion to accept the minutes as submitted in our packet.
I'll second.
Okay, it was moved by Commissioner Etzel, and I think Commissioner Espinosa was just ahead of Beverly on the second.
Okay.
So we'll go ahead and vote on this at this time. Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Are you approving the minutes? Yes.
That's a yes. Commissioner Espinosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Etzel?
Yes.
Vice Chair Talmadge?
Yes.
And I approve them as well. So they pass with flying colors, five to nothing. Item five is our public comments. This is the time where we invite anyone present, any member of the public, to come forward and speak on a non-agenda item. And so I will check to see if anyone has their hands raised at this point. And if it can be, I don't see anyone with their hands raised that would be coming to speak on a non-agenda item. Is that correct?
That's what I recognize as well.
All right, thank you. Then I'll go ahead and close the public comment period and move right into item six on our agenda tonight, which is a public hearing, IPD 407, AOG Architecture Studio. And could we please have a staff report on that?
Yes, Mr. Novy will be presenting this item.
Thank you, Mr. Vaca, Chairman Murphy, members of the Planning Commission. This IPD 407 is for AOG Architecture Studio and is located at 372 Dawson Drive, seen here on the map in between Lewis Road and Dawson Drive. The request is to demolish an existing 1,200-square-foot office building and vehicle storage yard and construct a new 18,821-square-foot tilt-up concrete industrial building with landscaping and a new parking lot. Here's a close-up picture of the subject project site, and you can see that 1,200-square-foot office building on the right-hand side of the picture, right off of Lewis Road and the vehicle storage area. Here you can see the proposed site plan for the new building. There will be parking along the south side of the building and on the east side of the building, and the space will be divided into two spec suites for warehousing, and each suite will have 1,500 square feet of office space. Here's a close-up of the floor plan that shows the proposed office area and demising wall in between the two tenant spaces. Unit one's proposing to provide 7,755 square feet of warehouse, and unit two, 8,066 square feet of warehouse, in addition to each providing 1,500 square feet of office. Here's the elevations of the building. The construction is tilt-up concrete. There is articulation in the wall planes of the building to provide additional depth, and there's variation in the roof heights. The building is also proposing a decorative cornice. There are metal accents on the storefronts, and there is a gated parking area on the west side, or sorry, east side. So the adjacent property to the south is under the same ownership as the subject property. Shown here, highlighted in orange, are seven parking stalls that were installed that were not permitted, that are encroaching into the future driveway entry to the project site. Down here in the bottom left-hand corner is an area that has unpermitted storage that is blocking a driveway entrance that will be removed as part of this project. And here in the top right-hand corner, you can see three additional parking spaces that are proposed to be removed in order to provide proper access for fire apparatus and for circulation on the site. This southern parcel was evaluated for required parking because the parking is going to be altered on this site. It requires 25 parking spaces, and 26 parking spaces are provided on this southern property. You can see here in the table of a breakdown of the parking of the subject property, the warehouse and office uses will require a combined 22 parking spaces, while the north side of the property will provide 24 parking spaces. So there will be a total of 50 parking spaces across the two parcels, and only 47 parking spaces are going to be required. The project was reviewed in accordance with CEQA and was determined to be exempt under a Class 32 infill exemption. Staff recommends approval of IPD 407 for the construction of an 18,821-square-foot industrial building, and the action of the Planning Commission is final unless an appeal is filed within 10 days of the date of their action. This concludes staff's report. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, thank you very much. Nice report. I think we already have a question from Commissioner Etzel.
I had a couple of questions. You know, I couldn't tell on the site, but you talk about the southern parcel being a separate owner. Is that a separate legal parcel?
It is a separate legal parcel, however, it's under the same ownership as the property to the north.
Yeah, and so is the proposed building, is it solely on the north parcel, or does it now overlap and encroach on both pieces where they're going to end up merging them, or is it going to be kept separate, the southern part?
My understanding is that the two parcels will be held separate. The building that's being proposed is entirely contained within the northern parcel, as well as the parking and landscape will be all self-contained on the northern parcel.
Okay, thank you. And then one follow-up question is, on this project, it was called the AOG Architectural Studio, and that's actually, I guess, the name of the applicant, not the intended tenant in the building?
That's correct. Yeah, the applicant and the property owner are both part of the meeting. I'm not sure if they have information on any future tenants. By understanding is that this is being built as a spec building for future tenant at some point.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other questions from the commissioners for Mr. Novy? Okay, I didn't really have any questions either. I did speak with staff a little bit earlier today in terms of what goes in the warehouse, which the city won't now, of course, until the project's done and they take on the occupants of the building. And at that time, the new businesses will need to apply for a business permit with the city, at which point they would need to disclose what is to be warehouse. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Any new proposed business will need to get what's called zoning approval, where the planning department will evaluate the proposed use for consistency with zoning and parking prior to approving their ability to get a business license.
Okay, great. Anything else from the commissioners? No, then we will move into the public testimony part of this. And before I open it up for that, there's a bit of procedural housekeeping for this web format. So the proposal is to have a three-minute time limit for each of our public speakers, and this is for both public hearings this evening. And then we'll keep track of that by those green, red and yellow buttons at the bottom. Is everyone in favor of that format? Or is anyone not in favor? And we'd like to hear your comments. Not seeing anyone with their hands raised, we'll take that as a planning commission approval of that format. I'll go ahead and open the public testimony, and I would ask if the applicant representative is here tonight to talk about this application.
Yes, hello, everyone. My name is Alan Jaimo with AOG Architecture Studio. John pretty much went over the presentation with everything describing the project. I don't really have anything to add. Both tenants, as he suggested, we don't know who they're going to be, but they will apply, and at that time will be reviewed before their business license. So this is a spec building, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but John did a very nice job presenting it, so I don't have anything to add.
All right, thank you. Do we have any commissioner questions for the applicant?
I had one or two.
Yes, go ahead.
The only question I think that I just wanted to verify, it looked like on the driveway entering, that part of that, that only part of that will reside on both parcels, and then it'll be curving up to where the rest of it will all remain on the northern parcel. Is that correct?
That is correct. There is currently an existing driveway there that is very narrow, and this driveway is going to be widened to serve both parcels, and it will be a shared driveway, and an instrument will be in place since it's the same ownership for both lots, that will be reported as a shared driveway. So the ingress egress will always remain in place.
Okay, so it'll cover the ingress egress to both the north and the south parcel?
Correct. The property to the south currently has two additional separate driveways, but this will be a third point of ingress and egress that will be shared, and all access across both properties will remain open because of that. So, correct, it'll be shared access.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, do we have any other commissioner questions for the applicant? Seeing none, oh, go ahead, and you need to unmute. Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Yes, more of a comment of compliment. I compliment the applicant on this particular proposed project. The, I think we've heard in some of the discussion that the existing buildings in the area are actually quite old, probably one of the first business parks built in Camarillo, and this is a very fresh new addition. And I compliment you on the bold design and color for the building. And I have to add, when I drove by the property to look at the project, I had a very difficult time figuring out where the existing building was because of all the trailers in the way. And knowing that those trailers are going to go away, I think that's a breath of fresh air. So my compliments to you on a very nice project. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chairman.
All right, do we have any further comments from planning commissioners for the applicant? All right, seeing none, I would like to invite any of the attendees from the public to speak if they wish to this evening. I'm looking at the list, and from what I see on the list, I do not see any hands raised. Could that be confirmed, Mr. Secretary?
Yes, thank you. That's correct.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and close the public testimony, and that brings us to the Architectural Review Committee meeting or hearing for this. And may I have a report on that, please?
Thank you. Excuse me. Yes, we did look at this, and we very much like the front of the building going in and out, the whole look of the building. The fact that you have different heights, different variations in the front, different aspects in the raised concrete as far as flat versus the corrugated, couple of different colors going in there, definitely more modern than what's on the street now. And it looked like, what I came up with, like a rejuvenation possibly of Dawson Avenue to start, you know, a new trend. So it's going to look different, it's going to look better, it's going to look fresh, and I think it's going to serve a great purpose there. So that was our comments after the meeting.
Okay, and it sounds like it was approved by the Architectural Committee.
It was approved by the Architectural Committee, yes. Minor detail.
All right, so are there any commissioner comments on the Architectural Review? Okay, seeing none, then we can move on into commissioner discussions and recommendations for this application. Do we have any comments? Go ahead, Luis.
Yeah, I think it seems like a very straightforward project, concrete tilt-up. And I think the design definitely is attractive and for the area, it should revitalize the area to a large extent. I'm completely in favor of the project and agree with the Architectural Review findings.
Okay, that's great. Commissioner Vandermeulen, any further comments?
Not really. I mean, when I looked at it and looked at the blueprints and looked at the slope of the roof, the roof and the way everything fit, it looks like everything's going to be behind the parapet. I like the lighter color on the parapet with the trim on it. They did a really good job, I think, of getting that parking, the driveway going in and a way for the trucks to get in and back into the loading dock areas. So it looks like it's well-planned for various different tenants to go in there, and I was very pleased with the project.
Commissioner Etzel?
I concur with the comments. I like it a lot, and I think it's going to be brand-new in that older industrial area that'll hopefully be a catalyst for something to start with the other ones, too. And I think it'll be a good fit, and I'm in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Talmadge?
I think also that the project is well-conceived and well-done, and I also appreciate the succinct but thorough staff report. It was very easy to understand what's going on with this project and what we are asked to do. And I also echo the comments that I think this will be an inspiration for some positive renovation and I think serves as influence to maybe brighten up the area. And I like very much the way this project is done. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and I pretty much echo all those comments. It's nice to see a new project coming in here and replacing the old with a nice-looking building and obviously a much more organized business for this site. I love the problem-solving component having to do with the zone violations on the adjacent property. It just makes sense to me to handle it all at the same time, so nice work on that, staff and applicant, to make that happen, so I, too, can easily support this project. Are there any further comments from the commissioners?
I just have one. It looked like they have more than adequate amount of landscape going around there, which is going to be quite different in that area also. So that's really going to liven up and give a fresh look to it as well.
All right, that's great. Be good to see that happen. I think we are at a point where we can call for a resolution.
Thank you, Chairman Murphy. Resolution number PC 2020-16, resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Camarillo, approving a request by AOG Architecture Studio for an industrial plan development permit, constructing new 18,821-square-foot industrial building located at 372 Dawson Drive in the light manufacturing M1 zone, further described and set forth as IPD 407.
Make a motion to wait for the reading and vote for adoption.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Etzel, seconded by Vice Chair Talmadge to adopt the resolution. Let's go ahead and vote. Commissioner Espinosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Yes.
Commissioner Etzel?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Talmadge?
Yes.
I'm a yes, too. Motion carries five zero. So we go right into item seven, the second of two public hearings tonight, supplemental EIR 2002-13, GPA 2018-1, CZ-328, and TT 5671-2M3. We have a staff report on this, please.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Murphy. Jackie Lee will be presenting this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Murphy and members of the Planning Commission. The City of Camarillo is considering requests for a general plan amendment 2018-1, an amendment to the Springville specific plan, change of zone 328, and a modification to tentative tract map 5671-2. The 43-acre project site shaded on this map is located at the northwest corner of Springville Drive and US 101, and is part of the larger 173.5-acre Springville specific plan area. The property is surrounded by single-family residences and open space to the north, US 101 to the south, agricultural fields to the west, Springville Drive to the east, and vacant commercial land across Springville Drive. The property is surrounded by single, can you see my screen? Were you not able to see my screen?
No, it's there. It looks great.
Okay, I had a pop-up message that, okay. On this screen, hopefully you could see the general plan amendment request, and the current general plan land use map designates the project site for institutional, semi-public, medium-density residential, low-to-medium-density residential, neighborhood park, and natural open space land uses, which is shown on the map on the left. The applicant is requesting to amend the general plan land use map as shown in the map on the right to eliminate three acres of existing institutional semi-public and seven acres of existing medium-density residential 10.1 to 18 dwelling units per acre designations. Also relocate the five-acre park site designated public neighborhood park, expand the low-to-medium density residential 5.1 to 10 dwelling units per acre designation from 14.5 acres to 20.36 acres, and expand the natural open space area by 4.14 acres to include the agricultural buffer and the berm. The proposed general plan amendment would reduce the overall density within the proposed project site from low-medium and medium-density residential to only low-medium-density residential. The size of the park would continue to be five acres, however, the shape would be modified from a long and narrow-shaped parcel to a more square-shaped parcel. The Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District supports the relocation of the future park site as it provides better access and opportunities for more amenities. On this slide is the existing adopted Springville specific plan land use map. It uses slightly different land designation labels, but is generally consistent with the existing general plan land use designations. The area under consideration tonight for an amendment to the land use plan is outlined in fuchsia on this slide. The Springville specific plan currently allows for up to 200 dwelling units on the project The Springville specific plan land use map is proposed to be amended in order to be consistent with the proposed general plan amendment, which is shown on this slide. The amendment to the specific plan would eliminate the medium-density residential designation, allowing only low-to-medium-density residential development to occur on the project site, and would reduce the number of units from approximately 200 dwelling units to a maximum of 159 dwelling units. Although the project proposes to reduce the density and the number of units on the project site, an amendment to the specific plan is required to increase the overall number of units permitted within the 173.5-acre specific plan area from a maximum of 1,350 dwelling units to a maximum of 1,365 dwelling units. As projects were approved within the specific plan area, projects including the Springville seniors affordable units, the Amly Apartments, and the Adagio Affordable Apartments resulted in more units than anticipated in the specific plan area. As a result, including the proposed project, the total number of units would be 1,365. The specific plan is proposed to be amended to place a final cap in the specific plan of 1,365 residential units. The specific plan amendment would also reduce the amount of commercial space on the existing vacant commercial zone property on the east side of Springville Drive from a maximum of 150,000 square feet to a maximum of 100,000 square feet, to be in line with the actual amount of commercial square footage that could be built based on the maximum lot coverage.
Low volume.
Under the current zoning map, the project site is zoned open space, rural exclusive, professional office, and residential plan development as shown on the map on the left. The map on the right shows the proposed change of zone to eliminate the professional office zone, to relocate the five-acre future park site, which is zoned rural exclusive, expand the open space zone to include 4.14 acres for the berm and agricultural buffer, and the remaining 20.36 acres, which is zoned RPD, to add a suffix of eight units per acre, so that would be RPD 8U, to be consistent with the proposed low-medium-density land use designation. The proposed change of zone is consistent with the proposed general plan amendment and specific plan amendment. The tentative tract map 5671-2 for the area west of Springville Drive was previously approved to be subdivided into six major parcels. The applicant is now proposing to modify the tentative tract map to subdivide approximately 43 acres into 168 lots, including 159 for-sale, single-family detached residential parcels, a 5.1-acre future park site, a .3-acre private recreation lot for use of the A point three acre private recreation lot for use of the residence. And an eight point two acre. Parcel for open space. The project proposes a density of seven point eight dwelling units per acre, which is consistent with the proposed RPD eight U zoning. The proposed single-family lots are arranged in clusters of four to six lots sharing the common driveway. The proposed for sale, single-family detached residences will each have a private yard. And a garage accessed from the common driveway. Access to the subdivision will be from Ponderosa Drive, which the developer is required to extend west of Springville Drive. The developer is also required to pay the existing daily drive frontage road along the existing agricultural property. West of the project site to Central Avenue as a secondary emergency exit. The recommended conditions of approval require a traffic signal. At the intersection of Ponderosa Drive and Springville Drive to be operational prior to. The first occupancy of the first unit or model. The proposed subdivision also complies with the specific plan requirement. For affordable housing units. Including the one hundred and fifty-eight proposed new single-family residences. There would be a total of five hundred and one market rate units within track five six seven one. Based on the Springville specific plan requirement to provide twenty percent affordable units. A total of a hundred and one affordable units are required. The completed Springville seniors apartment units fulfills this requirement. As the project provides a hundred and three affordable units. And this is an illustrative exhibit of the proposed subdivision. The Sholi House is proposed to be relocated approximately two hundred and ninety yards. Through the south southwest on lot one hundred and sixty-eight. Within the proposed development and rehabilitated for sale and occupancy as a single-family residence. Other features of the proposed development include a paved footpath. With a scenic lookout. On an existing water access easement. Additionally, the proposed subdivision includes a class one bike path. Which will be completed all the way to Central Avenue. A fourteen foot tall landscape berm along the north side of the US one oh one is required to be completed. Prior to occupancy of the first residential unit and will match the existing berm completed in the Springville specific plan area. And should the city council approve the requested general plan amendment? Specific plan amendment, change of zone. And tentative track map modification. The companion residential plan development permit will then be scheduled. For consideration by the planning commission at a future date for review of the site plan details and architecture. The recommended conditions of approval require the developer to dedicate to the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District. A five acre park site and to complete all the improvements. The district board of directors. Has approved the conceptual park site plan, which includes approximately two acres of turf playfield. Children's play equipment. Pickleball and basketball courts. A cornhole area. Bocce ball court. Outdoor fitness area. Shade structures. Fence park for dogs and restrooms. Staff has reviewed the proposed general plan amendment against the review criteria in city council policy seven point oh one. For non-city initiated general plan amendments. The community goals and general plan goals. And finds out the project is consistent with the goals of the city. Specifically, these include. That the project will provide a walking path with scenic lookout. A new five acre park with a range of recreational opportunities. Approximately twelve acres of open space. Private recreation lot and class one bike path. The project will also provide for housing diversity to the city's housing stock by allowing an opportunity for additional single-family detached units. The historic Sholi farmhouse will be relocated and rehabilitated for sale and occupancy as a single-family residence on the project site. Approximately twelve acres of natural open space will be preserved. And no amendment to the Camrio urban restriction boundary element is necessary. And now to discuss the environmental review that was conducted for the project. I'm going to turn the presentation over to Michael Brown with Cadence Environmental Consultant.
See. Good evening, everyone. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Good evening Chairman Murphy and members of the Planning Commission. It's good to see all of you again. And I appreciate the opportunity to be of assistance to the city on this project. And the Springville specific plan EIR was certified by the city council on January ninth, two thousand eight. And that document evaluated the development of up to fifteen hundred residential units. Up to one hundred fifty thousand square feet of retail and office space. Fifteen acres of public parkland. And also open space and public space. When the specific plan was approved. The city adopted EIR preferred development alternative four. Which included the development of up to thirteen hundred fifty residential units. Up to the hundred fifty thousand square feet of retail and office space. Ten acres of parkland rather than fifteen. And also included the open space and public space. The EIR determined that all impacts would be similar to or less than those of the original proposal. The, the, you know, the fifteen hundred units discussed above. And all mitigation measures were. Applicable to the preferred development alternative. The EIR was not revised to limit its applicability to the preferred development alternative. Meaning that, you know, it was not changed to update the, the amount of proposed, proposed development. The, the document continued to be based on the fifteen hundred and, and such. As such, the EIR continues to be applicable to all development within the specific plan area. We can change slides. So the proposed specific plan amendment would increase the all overall residential unit count. Excuse me. Of the specific plan from thirteen hundred fifty units to thirteen hundred sixty-five units. And reduce the amount of commercial space from one hundred fifty thousand square feet to one hundred thousand square feet. The impacts of the proposed specific plan amendment and the tract map are evaluated in the supplemental EIR. Which, as the title indicates, supplements the information and conclusions of the certified EIR. The supplemental EIR has determined that there would be no new or increased impacts for basically all of the topics of the. Uh of the certified EIR. With the exception of cultural resources, which we'll discuss in a moment. You can see land use planning, agricultural resources, biological resources. All of those uh topics that are based on development of the site. You know, the conversion of the site from its current condition to its, uh, its urban developed condition. Those would be the same. The topics that are human related or traffic related, if you will, such as traffic, noise, air quality, things like that. Would be lower than what was evaluated in the certified EIR because we have. You know, fewer people and uh less development that generates less traffic. So it, it all comes down to less overall development occurring within the same boundaries of the approved specific plan. We can move on. So the new potential impact that was uh largely the focus of the supplemental EIR. Dealt with the potential impacts to the Sholi farmhouse. And the certified EIR identified mitigation measures to preserve, to, to, uh, to provide fencing and protection of the farmhouse. And a packing shed that was located at the site. There is no requirement, however, in the certified EIR for the restoration or reuse of those structures. The packing shed, however, collapsed during a strong sand and a wind event in two thousand eight and the materials were cleared away. So all evidence of that building, other than in the documentation of the. Of the historic resources at the site. Those are gone. So only some other buildings remain now. In an updated study that was completed this year, the farmhouse has been determined. A, uh, to be a significant historic resource that is eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. The California Register of Historic Resources and as a historic landmark in the city of Camarillo. The applicant is now proposing to relocate the farmhouse approximately two hundred ninety yards to the southwest within proposed lot one sixty-eight. And to rehab rehabilitate it. As a single-family residence for occupancy and sale. New, new mitigation measures have been identified to address the proposed relocation and rehabilitation of the structure pursuant to the Secretary of the Interior's. Standards for the treatment of historic properties. And pursuant to SEQUEL guidelines, section fifteen zero six four point five B three. These measures would reduce the potential impacts to that historic resource to a less than significant level. The, the draft supplemental EIR was circulated for public review from June twelfth of this year until July twenty-seventh. A total of sixty-four letters and emails were received by the city in response to the draft supplemental EIR. However, sixty of these letters specifically requested the preservation of the Sholi farmhouse. So now we have prepared the final supplemental EIR for your presentation. And that document responds to the comments that were received regarding the draft supplemental EIR. It provides revisions to the text of the draft supplemental EIR. It updates the mitigation monitoring and reporting program of the certified EIR. And the text changes are largely based on the proposed relocation of the Sholi farmhouse to lot one sixty-eight. The textual changes to the, uh, to the draft EIR do not constitute a substantial revision as defined in section fifteen zero eight eight point five of the state SEQUEL guidelines. And circulation of the draft EIR is therefore not required. And that concludes my presentation and I'll be available for your questions.
Thank you, Michael. So in conclusion to staff's presentation. Staff provides the following recommend recommendations to the planning commission. Adopt a resolution recommending to the city council certification of supplemental EIR number two thousand and two dash thirteen. Adopt a resolution recommending approval to the city council. Of a general plan amendment. Two thousand and eighteen dash one. Adopt a resolution recommending approval to the city council of a request for an amendment to the Springville specific plan. Adopt a resolution recommending approval to the city council of change of zone three twenty-eight. And adopt a resolution recommending approval to the city council. Of a modification to tentative track map five six seven one dash two. And this concludes staff's presentation.
All right. Thank you very much, Jackie and Michael. Perhaps we could do this one at a time. So there's the supplemental EIR and the recommended actions. Why don't we start with any questions for Jackie on her presentation from the commissioners this evening? Go ahead Commissioner Edsall.
Yeah, I don't know. There may be questions for Jackie and. Michael, but on the, on the Sholi house. You know, they're going to move it to preserve it. And it, I mean. Will, will there be deed restrictions on it? Will an owner buying it be restricted on what they can? Do with it because it's a historical thing and, and then do, do, I mean, are there other places in the city where that's occurred? I, I just don't know if I can visualize someone wanting to purchase it if it's got restrictions on it, but, but maybe, maybe they are. So. That would be one question. And, and the follow-up on that same with the Sholi house was on the updated EIR, they had some updated mitigation. Measures. They just mentioned that, but I'm not sure if he said what those were. I've been curious if, if he could let us know what those are.
Sure. Michael, can you um? Touch on the requirements for any type of covenant and the mitigation measures?
So with regards to the, um, the rehabilitation and use of the Sholi farmhouse. Because it is a historic structure, there would be restrictions placed on it. You would, it would have to, you know, basically retain. It, it's, it's historic character, if you will. The, the. Two mitigation measures from the certified EIR that have been replaced. The first one was in regards to putting uh temporary fencing around the, the Sholi farmhouse and the packing shed. And then the second mitigation, mitigation measure was in regards to having permanent. Fencing around those structures, basically just to uh. You know, protect them, if you will. The first mitigation measure, what we did basically is we replaced that measure with a few others. And all of those uh specifically address the, the measures of how the. Existing condition of the house is going to be recorded. How the contractor for the relocation of the structure is going to be determined and the qualifications that they have. How the, the structure will actually be moved and, and how it will be. Rehabilitated, if you will. And that has to occur pursuant to the Secretary of the Interior standards. The second mitigation measure that required the permanent fencing around the, the house basically has been replaced by a new measure that requires fencing. You know, protecting the Sholi farmhouse from, from general people, if you will, going up there and things. So. So the mitigation measures really have just been replaced with ones that specify how the, the house is going to be restored. Or I should say, uh, recorded. Relocated and restored and protected.
And Mr. Chairman, I have one follow-up question if I might. Along those same lines on the, on the deed restrictions and just because I'm unfamiliar with this, would it? Would that person that would purchase that house, would they have to make it available for the public to? To tour it or anything like that? And then how do you price it? Would it be priced comparable with the other houses in that same area? Or would it just be a unique piece kind of sitting out there by itself? Uh, how, how would that work if you know?
As far, once the house is sold. As far, once the house is sold, the owners would not be required to make it available, you know, open to the public. That's up to them if they choose to do so. One of the measures requires that there be a plaque, if you will, either at that lot or maybe within the recreational, the park area, but something talking about the history of the Springville area and the Sholley Farmhouse there. So there will be that acknowledgement and that public display of information, if you will. As far as the pricing, that's something that the applicant can explain to you. The only thing that I know is that it is going to be very expensive to relocate it and restore it, but he'll be able to tell you how it might be priced on there. That's not an environmental situation that's under my purview.
Right, okay. Thank you very much.
I can also add that one of the mitigation measures is for the Sholley House to be nominated as a city landmark. And as a city landmark, there would be certain requirements and covenants associated with that designation that would run with that property.
Okay. Do we have any other? Go ahead, Luisa, unmute yourself, and Commissioner Espinosa, go ahead, please.
I want to sort of stay on the subject here with the Sholley House. I wonder what the motivation or purpose would be of going through the expense of restoring the house, which I've read through the packet, you know, the history, the information is fascinating, and it seems to me like something that should be restored, if at all possible. But to go through that expense where it would probably have to be, you know, what it would entail to move it, whether you can do that without structurally damaging it, and then without it having a public purpose. You know, it doesn't seem to make that much sense to me that it would just be for a single, for sale as a single-family residence, as opposed to having a public purpose as a home that can be restored for public access to be able to see the history and so forth. So I wonder if you could respond to that. Neither Michael.
I think, I believe that would be a question for the applicant. You know, the applicant is the one who is proposing now to move it and to rehabilitate it and offer it for sale as a home. So he would be the person to provide that information for you.
And you had mentioned in your report.
Commissioner Espinosa?
Yeah.
Well, we'd just like to share an offer that we have collaborated with the applicant. We arrived at this proposed form of mitigation to avoid having an impact that would be considered significant or unavoidable and potentially need an override or a statement of overriding considerations if the house were to be demolished altogether. So we think it's very reasonable that the house is moved and converted to a market rate unit, and that it would still have historic value in the community because it's within the same area where it was originally utilized by the family. And so I do think it would be good to get additional information from the applicant, but this is something that staff has supported in concept, and we think that it's reasonable and doable, and we actually think it's a good idea. So there are other historic properties in the city that aren't designated as landmarks and that are used for private purposes. And one that comes to mind is the office for the Boy Scouts over on Bailey Drive.
Okay, so we'll ask the applicant about that a little bit further on here. Do we have any further questions, or either Jackie or Michael, on this matter?
I have one more question, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, in the presentation, they talked about on the corner of Ponderosa and Springville Drive, that there's going to be a decorative feature. It was in Jackie's report, and I just wondered if she could explain that or elaborate a little bit. Is that, you know, some sort of public art, or what are they referring to?
So there is that requirement in the specific plan for there to be some type of decorative feature at that gateway into the specific plan, and the applicant would be submitting that to the city for our review. And the applicant would be able to explain what they have in mind for that proposal. But that could be anywhere from a landscape feature to maybe a relief on the wall. Again, the applicant would probably be better to speak to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Andrew Mueller.
As far as the environmental part, just a real simple question, kind of important to me as far as I didn't see anything addressing lighting when they were talking about different aspects of, in the EIR and such. So I just want to make sure, and I'm sure this is probably right, that any streetlights and stuff, they are kind of a drawn draft light rather than something shining up. And I want to make sure that was happening through Springville area so that we're not getting lights on to the houses up the hill.
So the.
Now, but.
So the supplemental EIR focused on the similarities and differences, if you will, from what was identified in the original certified EIR. And so there are no changes to the lighting program, if you will, associated with this project. It's only changing the land use designations and things like that. So it's my understanding that the lighting within this area of the specific plan would be, you know, consistent with what's being constructed elsewhere within the specific plan area. No change associated with the proposed actions.
Okay. Just, I know when I first came out here, I had nice use of the stars till they built Village at the Park. And then a lot of the view of the stars went away, so I've always been interested to make sure what kind of lights they're using. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? And the only thing I have is to hopefully confirm my understanding that while there are some additional units, residential units overall, in the total Springville specific plan, there's quite a few more affordable units than originally designated for the specific plan. And those affordable units, I understand, are low-income and possibly very low-income. I thought I read that somewhere in the staff report, which if my understanding is correct, obviously that helps the city meet their RENA goals for those two categories. Is that a reasonable take on this?
Yes, Chairman Murphy. There are 242 affordable housing units in the Springville specific plan, and 121 of those are low-income units, and 120 are very low-income units. And it does exceed the number of affordable units that are required to be provided in the specific plan. And there's actually, it exceeds it by 17 units. So yes, they comply with the affordable unit requirement.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Any further? Go ahead, Commissioner Espinosa. Unmute yourself and.
I forgot. One other thing I wanted to ask was about the west end of the specific plan area where the winrow of existing eucalyptus trees. It mentions something about putting in additional row of trees there on that side. And I assume the homeowners association will be required to maintain all the open space area north of Ponderosa within that specific plan area? If there's any vegetation management required, and then any tree maintenance required? Is that correct?
That's correct. That is correct. They will be required to form a homeowners association for this development, and HOA will be responsible for maintaining the ag buffer trees and the open space areas and the landscaping and common areas.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Commissioner Andrew Mueller.
I'd like to just go back to the affordable housing just for a minute, because when I was reading through it, I was reading the amount of 20% for Springville affordable housing, 10% divided below and whatever the two divisions are. And if we were looking at 20% of the 1368, we would have around 270 units that would be affordable. And I think Jackie, I think you only mentioned around 240. So is that 20% incorrect as far as applied to all of the Springville housing?
So I can explain how that calculation was done. We take only the market rate units, and of the market rate units, then you calculate the 20%. So there's 1,123 market rate units in the Springville plan, including the proposed 158 new units. So 1,123 market rate units take 20%, and that is 225.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Okay. Any further questions? Commissioner Espinosa's question jogged my memory about the open space, the hillside portion of the open space. Is it conditioned to clear that brush and to landscape that area? I don't remember how that area is to be treated, just the hillside portion.
Sure. The hillside portion is designated natural open space, and it's going to be kept natural open space. That part is not being proposed for any changes. So that natural open space area would be maintained as a natural open space, and it wouldn't be cleared or removed and relanscaped.
All right. Commissioner Espinosa?
Just for personal knowledge, I can add to that, that homeowner associations, I think, because I'm directly involved with this, can sometimes will engage in vegetation management in open space areas within their development area. If it's a threat, it's a fire risk and a threat. If the county fire department was to say, you know, there's too much vegetation here, it's too high, it's going to be a threat to the homes and surrounding area, they could probably encourage them to take mitigation steps in that regard.
Yeah, that makes sense.
We do have similar areas where there are natural space on the hillsides, and we do work with the property owner to clear it when the weeds get too high or where the landscaping, the vegetation has died, and then the property owner does clear that and does remove that brush.
Excellent. All right. Any further questions for staff, for the commissioners? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move into the public testimony. I see that Dennis has been with us for a bit here, and Mr. Hargrave is available to answer any questions. Dennis, did you want to talk about this application?
Yes, I do. Am I coming through?
Yes, you are.
Great. Okay. As an applicant, I may ask for a little more than three minutes. I'll do my best to respect that, and then we can certainly be ready to answer questions. I won't speed you off into some of the questions that have come up right now. But first of all, good evening, Chairman Murphy and Planning Commission. I'm Dennis Hargrave of Development Planning Services. I'm the planning and project manager for the owners Ran Rancho. They've owned this property for over 30 years, and we've worked with them for over a decade on the first phase of Springville. And for the last four years, we've worked very closely with city staff, Pleasant Valley Park District, and the technical team for this past four years on this final phase of the Springville specific plan. More recently, we've worked very closely with both the Historical Society and San Buenaventura Conservancy to finalize a plan that provides a number of benefits. And Jackie, if you don't mind going back to Slide 4, I think it's probably about the best thing we can look at if they can let us roll back to that, and we can leave that up for most of the time. Let me just give you an overview of what we've done with this plan. First of all, some of the highlights staff has already hit. It's a reduction in the overall density of this area west of Springville Drive from 200 units plus three acres of office or institutional use, down to 158 new units and preservation of the Sholley House for a total of 159. It's as well a very large reduction in overall traffic, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes, based on the idea of dropping this 50,000 feet of commercial out of the overall project. It also creates a beautiful and highly functional park gateway at the west entry to Camarillo for so many people who get off at Springville and move into, coming to the city in that direction. It'd be a great entrance to have there on that left, to have a park, very unusual, and the park district certainly supports us making that move. Probably most significantly, it preserves what is one of the last remaining 1800s buildings from the original Springville community, which, as you've seen in the documents, has got a pretty fascinating background, and this would be the Sholley House. And I'll go into that with you as you want to ask questions later. The last significant thing it adds is a bike path to Central Avenue, a Class 1 bike path that expands our bike network and opens up a larger area and connects to the park and the berm as well. Sticking with Slide 4, we look at it, this specific plan amendment is a logical improvement over the 2008 specific plan for several reasons. First, the original specific plan, that either an institutional use or a office use, BRP, would be where the park will now be located. The Ventura County Airport Authority has very high restrictions on high occupancy uses in the Springville area on this north side of the airport. It's one of the reasons why there would not be a practical assembly building of any kind that could be built here. So example, institutional would imply it could have been a church or something. They would not support that use at this location because of its proximity on the inbound flight pattern for the right, what they call the right turn-in flight pattern for the airport. So it was not really a rational use, and it's evolved over time. The airport authority has refined their requirements on that. And secondly, there's excess of office space in the city, even prior to the COVID-19 experience. We already had potentially between 15 and 20% vacancy, according to some surveys from the brokerage community. As Jackie had mentioned earlier, the park at the west edge was a long and narrow parcel that sloped more radically than it will at this new location, and it had little access for the public and not much function. And again, there were 200 units in this area, and it included condo densities, which is more keeping with what's on the east side of Springville specific plan. But this is a lower density and more appropriate as a transition to this site. Again, we're doing 158 units instead of 200. The proposed project, as has been stated, has no new impacts. In fact, the slight increase in total units on the Ran Rancho properties combined, everything from Earl Joseph Drive West, is from 600 in the specific plan to 605. The overall, as has been stated. The overall, as has been stated, the additional homes that have been built in the Springville specific plan that have exceeded what was planned were affordable units, as has been stated earlier. And they are all deed restricted, I believe, for 55 years for low income and very low income residents. We're extremely proud of the senior project that we designed and had found a partner to build for the property owners in the Springville project. It's a, we just, if you've not been through it, please go see it. It's a, it's a great location and people love living there. And it's been home for some people who were homeless within this community in the past. So we think it's been a great plan and done well. If we talk about what happens with this drop of 50,000 square feet, you can see on this exhibit you're looking at that on the very right edge, you can see where the red is with the stripe on it. That's east of Springville Drive. That's the commercial component that's still left. In the original specific plan, there was an exhibit that called for 150,000 square foot shopping center. And when you looked at the exhibit, it proposed a parking structure, two separate parking structures, which would have had approximately 400 cars in it. You would have needed at least 600 cars to park to cover a 150,000 foot shopping center, which would have really been on par with something like the Westlake Promenade or something like that in terms of the style of building, only it would have been with a parking structure. So a very grandiose concept and years later, we had multiple shopping centers on the south side of Springville, so it's really not viable. And just to give you an idea of what happens, if you add these 15 units at residential traffic generation, they generate 132 daily trips for 15 units. The, the 50,000 feet of shopping center that's being removed removes 2,525 trips from the traffic volume. So it's a 94% reduction basically in traffic from this 50,000 square foot reduction. So that's why the EIR consultant's been able to say there is no impact on traffic from this. So it's been a real positive there. If you look then, Jackie, if you can go to slide 11, I think it's a great one to wrap up with.
What, what is the slide of?
It's the illustrative site plan, so. The pretty picture is always the best way to explain what's really happening in a project. So first of all, what the project will do, it will build the park. We have the full support of the Pleasant Valley Recreation and Park District. In their meetings, they were very happy with how we programmed this park, that it would meet a lot of unmet needs that they have in this end of town. So the project would build the park, it would build a bike path, as is shown here, to Central, provide the scenic overlook path in the open space area. And it would construct the traffic signal at Ponderosa and Springville Drive. The, the point to make here with this single family detached project, this is very similar in character to what you would see on Village Commons Boulevard and Village at the Park. Those are four plexes on an auto court. And this would be a very similar kind of idea in that it's shared driveways. The difference now is we've added driveway aprons to these houses as well. So we've even increased the parking availability more. You'll see that when you see the project later. But as you can see, just from looking at the site plan, we're really trying to detune this site plan from what would, would have been if it would have been condominiums. We feel like all two-story product and this kind of lower intensity with green belt intensity and walk, walking distance to parks and green belts and bike paths is really in keeping what, with what we set out to do and we feel like we accomplished with the Village at the Park project. Obviously, at this point, you know, looking at the inventory of land and pending projects, that there are very few unbuilt detached homes for sale in the city or in the planning stages in the city. The ones that are, are primarily proposed as age restricted housing. This means a very significant unmet need for single family housing for the long-term future. It takes four or five years or longer to get a project to the entitlement stage. And we just don't see that there's many more options coming down the pipe for, for this type of project. In conclusion, I urge your support of this project. We feel it has community support in many ways. It's logical and it's an improvement over what would be allowed by right on the parcel. And we would intend to move forward next year and move into construction as a project like this, if it gets approved, won't require development allotments under the state law at this point. So I'm here to answer whatever questions you may have. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Hargrave. Do we have any commissioner questions for Dennis? Commissioner Espinosa, go ahead, please.
Yeah, for the applicant, one quick question regarding the reduction in the acreage for the residential by four acres, I think it was. What impact did that have? Because I think the prior referral talked about 2024 acres. And as far as lot sizes, did that impact just the yard or the yards and the size of structure of dwellings?
No, actually, I think it's really more of a change in approach. And Ms. Lee can comment to that after I make this comment. She can confirm or or modify what I'm saying. What's different in this from the original zoning and general plan was originally the berms were included in the zoning of parcels, if that makes sense to you. You know, if I'm explaining it correctly. So the zoning went all the way down basically to the freeway. There was no open space parcel. So really, the loss is not a loss in net usable land in any way, shape or form. There was always going to be a berm and there was always going to be the, the access road because in addition to a bike path, as you see east of Springville Drive, when you go along that berm, you notice there's an asphalt road there already too. All of the city's sewer mains and water mains as well as Southern California gas transmission main are all in that access road. So that's not really buildable, those areas. So does that answer the question? Yeah, we're actually gaining, we're actually getting more usable yard by getting rid of the condos. You know, condos would have just had balconies in all likelihood. They would have been, you know, a higher density townhome with a little private patio. This, every home, when you see these homes, say, we'll all have a private yard.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Thank you.
I would just confirm that we feel since we're doing a general plan amendment here and we're shifting land uses, it was most appropriate to have the berm in an open space area so that it doesn't lend itself to being considered in the overall density calculation for the residential development. So we think that'd be best practice and that's why this plan has been laid out the way it is at this point.
All right, do we have any further questions from commissioners? From Mr. Hargrave, yes. Commissioner Vandermeun.
On the open space area to the north of the residences, where you're putting in the walking path and such, is that also to be maintained by the homeowners association? Is that still part of the homeowners association land?
The land that belong, will ultimately be conveyed to the homeowners association. Underlying it will be an easement as well to at minimum the city of Oxnard because they have a, a water pipeline in there. They have a Cuyahoga's regional, like a 42-inch water line in that road that goes up to the large reservoir that's near the tennis courts in the upper Springville Park. There's a huge, yeah, the huge Cuyahoga's reservoir up there. And then it comes down and it runs through our green belt buffer along Street C on the west edge. And then it turns west and goes down Central and heads over to Ventura, or over to Oxnard. So they have an obligation to maintain that. They haven't done a great job of it in the past. But the, we will resurface that roadway as part of this project. And then the HOA will install the bench and shade structure up there. But there won't be utilities or anything up there. There won't be lights added or anything up there.
Now, but ultimately down the road, the HOA will be maintaining the walkway in the sitting area.
Correct, right. It'd be, it, it would be somewhat similar in charact, I'm not insane in character, but in practical application to the Village at the Park green belt next to Lamp lighter Mobile Home Park. That's owned by Village at the Park. It's maintained by Village at the Park HOA, the master HOA. But from the day it opened before a house was even built or opened at Village, people at Lamp lighter enjoyed using it. So it's obviously open and people bike on it still, you know, from a lot of neighborhoods.
Okay. And then on the, excuse me, the emergency access road going out to Central?
Yes.
I think I read that that would also be maintained by the homeowners association?
Correct.
Is there any possibility of splitting the maintenance on that with the farmers that it goes along? Because I think the farmer workers would also be using that.
They probably would. We can discuss that with those property owners. But I think this, what the city public works department for was looking for something ironclad that they had somebody to turn to for that. It is public land. It's public right of way. But such, it's city, City of Camarillo owned right of way that was deeded back from Caltrans years and years ago. And so it's city, it is city property. But this, the public works department has conditioned this project to pay for the maintenance through the HOA.
Okay, so none of, none of that roadway land is part of the farm land, farmer's land?
Farmer land. It's city land, right.
Okay. It just seemed like a little bit of a big expense possibly coming, you know, years down the road.
It is, and it actually is something that has to get nowadays folded into HOA costs. I'm on two HOA boards and so I'm familiar, as some of you are, if you're in HOA, that when you have private streets in the HOA, you pay for them, you know?
I'm very familiar with HOA.
For better or worse, we all are, right?
For better or for worse, yeah. So yeah, I was looking at, you know, some of these expenses and reserve account thoughts and, you know, everything that's going to have to be planned for, you know, 20, 30, 40 years from now.
You're exactly right. The only public street in the project is Ponderosa Drive.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of what, that's how I read that, so. Except the park is going to be taken over by the park department, right?
Yes, it will. It will be fully maintained by the park department after the builder turns it over to them, correct.
Okay. I think I read all that correctly then. Thank you.
All right, do we have any further questions? Go ahead, Vice Chair.
When I looked at the actual track map, the previous exhibit that we had up on the screen was the pretty map. I wanted to look at the ugly map, which is the one with all the lines on it. It seems that there's an extension of Ponderosa Drive that looks like a paper street that goes up through the open space lot. Is that vacated with the work on this project?
No, in fact, if we go back, I'm not sure Jackie, if you have access to that slide.
Maybe slide 10.
Okay, and I can explain.
For that one.
There you go. Okay, when you're looking at the dash line sliding up the hill, going
Yes.
tracking off, no, that is actually the Alquestrielo Fault Setback Zone.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
With Ponderosa, that if you were going to go around the other property, that would have been a paper future street.
No, yeah, that's a, that's a great catch and I think it's not highly detailed here. You'd have to go to volume 14 of the geotechnical report to find out exactly what it goes.
I didn't have that. Okay.
But it is, that's the fault setback and that's, that's the definition. We, you may, some people may remember, we about three years ago, probably now, we went out and did another large exploratory trench out there.
Yes.
Just about where Street C is. And it went, and then a smaller trench that went all the way up so that we could define, in fact, that the fault was never located. So it's north of this, it, what happens is they extrapolate that it's north of here if it doesn't show up south of here.
Right.
So that's a, that's a setback that's theoretical in most cases.
Okay, all right. Answers that question. The, also in that same open space lot, you have a big retention basin for stormwater runoff. Where does that actually relieve and go into a storm sewer? Is that, there's a dash line that comes down from the end of that storm retention basin and goes along, let's see, what street is that?
Street E?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, that was a kind of a interim basin that was, lack of a better term, I'm going to say it was hogged out at the toe of the hill when Spanish Hills was built.
Right.
They got an easement from these property owners to build that and it was kind of a old fashioned desilting basin with no real outlet. It just spilled over into the farmland if it did. And, and this project's required to, in effect, restore that basin's capacity back because it's kind of silted up over the years. And, and then have a protected inlet for it to get into the storm drain system. But then it, when it winds through the storm drain system, it comes all the way down and gets into a desilting or water quality basin, which you see down next to Lot 8 rec at the, right near the berm.
Okay, right, yeah, that's what I thought.
It does get treated at that point before it goes into a storm drain.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I'm backing up, but thank you very much for your presentation. It, I think was really well done. And the general comments, I think that it's excellent that we are saving the Sholli House. I know there are still questions as to how that's going to really happen. And I don't know if you're prepared to talk about how you're going to move it or costs or how it's going to be renovated and how you're going to make it available as a marketable house to someone in the public.
Do you want me to address that a little bit? I can give you, yeah. First of all, the EIR mitigation measures are really extensive. If you read the page.
Yes.
Those pages really set out the protocols that you have to follow. And among those, from, from the first observations we've had, it's a small house, so that's an advantage to it. It's also on a raised foundation, which is an advantage. And it's also lumber that's probably from somewhere like the 1860s, 70s or 80s at the latest, which means it's pretty sturdy old growth lumber in many cases. And, and so it's, it's an easier move than say if you were trying to pick up a 3,500 square foot ranch house that was on a slab. So, so it's a, it's, it's an easy move. We're thankful that we don't have to put it on a public street at this point. It's actually an improvement over the earlier idea. We were going to move it to the commercial site across the street. But, you know, leaving it in context in this part of the ranch improves that. The historical advocacy groups, and I won't speak for them, but I'll just say what I've learned in working with them, is that the, the preferred practice in many cases for structures like this is not to put them in a maintenance heavy museum type setting anymore. And HOAs don't want them and the park district didn't want it because of the maintenance cost. The best way to add, you know, 50 or 100 years of life to a house like this is to actually relocate it. They call it, I think it's reposition. It's a practical term they use. Reposition the house if necessary, which it is in this case because Springville Drive grading and everything would interfere with its location. And, and then to restore the outside of the house, but you can modernize the inside. So you don't have to in a house like this, the requirements, as I understand them, aren't that you have to go find 1892 drawer pulls and things like that. You can actually modernize the inside of it. So the remediation's a little easier in some cases because this house is so old that odds are, other than some linoleum, there won't be much asbestos. And there might be some lead and some paint that people used at some point. But, but it's, they, you know, they're encouraging me that it's feasible. What happens, we have, we will not, this, this project will be sold to a home builder who will build it. That's just the normal process that happens here. In, in, in Camarillo and all of Ventura County, the entitlement period is so long that rarely will you see a home builder buy a piece of land and build it, you know, and go through all the approvals. You know, it doesn't happen too often. So we'll sell this to a home builder. And then the property owner is reserving the right to keep the house and arrange to do the restoration themselves and put it on the market at a sales price, at a market rate, so whatever the market will bear for a house. There are people who like these old houses, you know, particularly if they're modernized. Or it will be potentially sold to someone else at a very low price, very, very low price. And they will do the restoration within a at a very low price, very, very low price, and they will do the restoration within a guaranteed timeframe. So the, the goal is that it has to be restored. It has to be, you know, and it has to be, has to be done in a, in a, you know, a certain manner, meeting federal standards. So we're kind of excited about it. We think it's interesting. Well, we plan on doing some signage at the park that identifies that this is the site of the original Springville settlement and the Sholley Ranch, and maybe do a, some kind of sign board, work with the historical society for that, you know, some kind of permanent laminated kind of graphic that would show that right when you come to the park. And then maybe, and a small sign at the house probably, but you don't, you don't encourage people to come knock on your front door, but you just identify it like you would see in New England or in a lot of historic towns where you might say, Sholley House, you know, 1882 or whatever it is. And that's all it says.
Yeah.
So, so anyway, that's, that's about all I know. It's, there's a lot in the weeds for it, but we'll, we'll live with it, just like we have with every other condition and every other project we've been given.
I understand. And I appreciate your, your comments and your concern on it. Too often I've seen that the answer for historic structure is, well, just take a bunch of pictures and put them in the file. And this, this is a far better answer. So.
Yeah, I'm glad there were so many people excited about it. I mean, I did not, honestly, we talked to family, you know, descendants of the Sholley family, and they were excited about it. And then others got on board and we just thought after, well, look, I think we can come up with a solution. And the, the conservancy people were very forward thinking and, and helping pull something together that the city could put into the EIR. So.
Right.
Glenn?
Well, compliments also go to the supplemental EIR for having, I think, a very good discussion in the document about this particular feature. I think it's important that it did get the space that it got in the printed material and the mitigation measures. And I think it's very appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Tomage. Do we have any further questions for Mr. Hargrave? I don't see any others. Dennis, I have one, and it has to do with the, the secondary access road out to Central. I thought I read in the staff report somewhere that, that the developer would need to either obtain an easement from the underlying property owner, or it might go to eminent domain. Am I, but, but I think what you're saying is it's actually already public right of way.
It is if there are any small slivers that require access, because there's a couple of little choke points that might occur, that there might be places where it's less than, the goal is to get both a bike path and a 26-foot fire lane in here in that cross section. And if we run into a couple of, there's a potential area, probably in the first 400, 500 feet as you leave the site, where it could be narrower. We still need to do further underlying title search, but all the title data everywhere else, all the way out to Central in front of the farmhouses clearly shows there's 46 feet there that the city owns. So, so it's kind of a normal procedure. I think it happened, actually it happened with Spanish Hills. They, they had some eminent domain from this property when they were developed to get some of the roads, you know, get down Vina Del Mar, I think it was off the hill. And, and the same thing with Sterling Hills. When we did that, there, there was the connection of Ottland, if you know, from the South Gate out of Sterling Hills into Spanish Hills. So it's a comment, I think it's a common condition for public works.
Okay. So it's safe to say that nearly all of that easement areas is already public right of way. There might be little slivers from what I understand.
There may be a wedge here or there that there's, that it's not the full width. And then they would, we would have to, we will, we'll approach the property owners and, and then use the normal process we do. And if it doesn't, not successful, then there is always the backstop of eminent domain.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Hargrave? I don't see any. And so at this point, I would invite anyone from the public that is attending. I see not a whole lot there. I don't see any hands up. Is that a correct interpretation? That we don't have anyone from the public speaking on this this evening?
We do not recognize anybody. I still would recommend that you please say that you're opening the public hearing.
Okay. So I, I think I opened it in the beginning. And, and at this point, I'll, I'll go ahead and close, I'll open and close, however the case may be. We will close the public testimony on this.
Thank you.
Okay. And then I could just go ahead and open it up to Commissioner Commons. Commissioner Vandermeulen, would you like to get us started here?
Okay. Well, first of all, I am a little disappointed that they couldn't use the house for the rec center for the common area. But I, he mentioned enough about the costs and the maintenance and such to cover why that wouldn't happen. I'm glad they can save it and be used. I also think there are some benefits tax-wise owning a historic property if it gets all the historic status to it. So that'll be good. But other than that, on the project itself, I think it's laid out really nice with a lot of green space, a lot of activities physically, you know, from walking to biking to the park to even a hillside to go up and down. I'm glad it's the detached homes rather than townhomes than the three stories. And I like it much better than what was originally planned. So I'm happy to see the changes in it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Espinosa?
Well, I definitely, I think I'm very comfortable with the supplemental EIR report that I was able to review. I mean, after all the, originally, they were looking at 1,500 homes. And so increasing the home number by 15 from the specific plan seems completely fine to me and don't see any additional impacts. I think the, all the land use, the general plan and land use requirements all seem to be met. I like the changes that they've made, actually. I like the way they decided to relocate the park where they did. And I tend to agree that for that specific plan area, single-family units is a good use of that plan development area. So I certainly feel like I can support this project going forward.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Retschel?
Yeah, I'm a lot happier with this modified plan than with the original. And I like the idea of being single-family. I think that works out well as well. And then the presentation I thought was, was excellent. I got all my questions answered, and I think it's an improvement from what, what they had earlier. So I supported as well.
All right. Thank you. Vice Chair Tomage?
Yes, I have a few comments. First off, on the supplemental EIR, I thought it was a very good discussion of the changes. Changes being what was there before and what is going to be occurring now. And I thought that was a very good summary. And also, it was interesting to note that at certain times, it followed the newly adopted guidelines and thresholds that if you recall, we discussed and reviewed with the consultant back earlier in the spring. And many of those things were picked up and carried forward in this supplemental EIR. And there was an excellent discussion, I mentioned this earlier, of the Sholley Farmhouse, of how to preserve it, what to do, and not just take pictures of it, but to discuss its relocation. And also, the changes that were made to the mitigation monitoring plan, I thought, I think were very appropriate and give us a good guideline on what to look for as the Sholley House is restored and relocated, or relocated then restored. And other things that the ultimate owner is going to be required to follow in terms of mitigation measures for those impacts that were identified. For the project itself, I liked the fact that there was a reduced density from what had been previously identified. We addressed the Sholley House, and then there were a couple of comments that we saw that we were forwarded. And I think those have already been resolved. And I'll, I'll just leave that as an open question. There was one concerning, concern of a sidewalk. And then there was some second one that came in, I think, yesterday. And I think those have been addressed and answered. But overall, I think there's been a lot of good consideration of the project to look at. First off, is it a project that helps the city? And I think the answer to that is yes. Is it an asset to the city? And I think the answer to that is yes. It's, it has a sensitive design. It, it encourages and uses open space, recreation space, connections to hiking trails, biking trails, and the like. And I think there's a good consideration for the overall use of land. So with all that said, I'm very much in support of all the resolutions that we're going to have to go through, but notably the supplemental EIR and the track map and the general plan amendment. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. And yes, I, I think that the presentations made by, by staff and Mr. Hargrave were very thorough, complete, as well as the supplemental EIR for this. It took me a while to read through this one, and I had to read through it again. And, and again, to get a feel for what, everything that was proposed. But when I look at the proposed plan versus the existing plan, the proposed is, is so far superior. If you'd gone in the other direction, and we were looking at the proposed as the existing, and, and gone in the other direction, we would, I, I think we, we would have had a problem with that. But there's, there is a public benefit to this. The Sholley House, I, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Espinosa with saying there's some concern about whether that's going to pencil out. It probably won't pencil out, but it's a, it's a, that, I don't think that that matters. It's, it's a huge effort by the part of city staff and the historical society and, and the developer to come up with an, a, a unique solution. I haven't seen something like this before. And so I think that that's great, the public benefit. I like what, you know, the addition of the path to the lookout area in the hillside portion of, of the open space. So all of those things considered, and with all the comments we've had here tonight, I can certainly support this project.
Thank you, Chairman Murphy. I just wanted to also reiterate and note that for the record, we did receive two emails that provided comments on the project. And those were distributed to the planning commissioners for consideration prior to the meeting this evening. And all commissioners received those and read those. And those are also available at the city for the public to be desired. Thank you.
We did receive those letters, and it's our understanding that the, the city has also responded to those letters. And I don't have any further comment on those. So I think that we are at a point where we can call for a resolution.
Thank you. And by way of going through the process, I would just like to verify with Deputy City Attorney that we're going to go one resolution at a time.
Yes, Mr. Secretary, I think that that probably will be the cleanest way to go since there are, I think, five of them. So let's do it that way.
Okay, thank you. The first is Resolution Number PC 2020-17, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Camarillo recommending certification to the city council of a supplemental environmental impact report 2002-13.
Move to wait for the reading and vote for adoption.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Retschel, seconded by Vice Chair Tomage. For approval, let's go ahead and vote. Commissioner Vandermeulen? You need to unmute, please.
Sorry. Yes?
Thank you. Commissioner Espinosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Retschel?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tomage? Thank you. And I'm a yes too, so that carries 5-0.
Thank you. The next resolution is on General Plan Amendment 2018-1, and that is Resolution Number PC 2020-18, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Camarillo recommending approval to the city council of a request by Dennis Hargrave of Development Planning Services representing Ran Rancho Associates Camarillo for an amendment to the land use element of the city's general plan, further described as General Plan Amendment 2018-1.
I'll move again to wait for the reading and vote for adoption.
I'll second.
Moved by Commissioner Retschel, seconded by Commissioner Vandermeulen. For approval, let's go ahead and vote. Vice Chair Tomage?
Yes.
Commissioner Retschel?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinosa?
Yes.
And Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Yes.
I'm a yes too, so that too carries 5-0.
Next is in relation to the specific plan amendment, Resolution Number PC 2020-19, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Camarillo recommending approval to the city council of a request by Dennis Hargrave of Development Planning Services representing Ran Associates and Rancho Camarillo Associates for an amendment to Springville specific plan.
I can again make the motion to wait for the reading and vote for adoption.
I'll second.
All right. We have, moved by Commissioner Retschel, seconded by, I believe, Commissioner Espinosa. Or was it Commissioner, or was it Vice Chair Tomage? Vice Chair Tomage was the official seconded there. Let's go ahead and vote. Commissioner Retschel?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Tomage?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. So that carries 5-0.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Murphy. Next is a resolution pertaining to the change of zone. Resolution Number PC 2020-20, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Camarillo approving recommendation of approval to the city council of a request by Dennis Hargrave of Development Planning Services representing Ran Associates and Rancho Camarillo Associates for a change of zone from three acres zone professional office and 21 and a half acre zoned residential plan development to approximately 4.14 acres zoned open space and approximately 20.36 acres zoned residential plan development, eight units per acre maximum, and relocation of five acres zoned rural exclusive for a future park site located in the Springville specific plan area, further described as change of zone 328.
I'll move to wait for the reading and vote for adoption resolution.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion from, for approval from Commissioner Espinosa and seconded by Commissioner Retschel. Let's go ahead and vote. Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Retschel?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tomage?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. So that carries 5-0.
Thank you, Chairman Murphy. Last is a resolution pertaining to the tentative track map, Resolution Number PC 2021, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Camarillo recommending approval to the city council of a request by Dennis Hargrave of of a Request by Dennis Hardgrave of Development Planning Services Representing Ran Associates and Rancho Camarillo Associates for a Modification to Tentative Track Map five-six-seven-one-two to subdivide forty-three-point-three acres into one-hundred-and-sixty-eight lots, including one-hundred-and-fifty-nine single-family for-sale residential lots, a five-acre lot for a future park site, and a point-three-acre private recreation lot, and eight-point-two acres of open space located at the northwest corner of Springville Drive and US one-oh-one Ventura Freeway, further described as Tentative Track Map five-six-seven-one-two-M-three.
Make a motion to wait for the reading and vote for adoption. I'll second.
It's moved for approval by Commissioner Etzel, seconded by Commissioner Espinoza. Let's go ahead and vote. Vice Chairman Tomage?
Yes.
Commissioner Vandermeulen?
Yes.
Commissioner Etzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Espinoza?
Yes.
And I'm a yes too, so that carries five-zero. So I believe that was the last one. Is that the last one?
Yes.
Okay. Well, congratulations to the, the applicant, to the city staff for all your hard work in, in putting this together. As I mentioned before, I think it's, it's much better looking than, than the one that had already been approved. Thank you very much for all of that, and congratulations. I believe that brings us to the Director's Report.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I want the Planning Commission, all of you, to know that we really appreciate your thorough review of our general report and all the backup materials. I'm very grateful to the staff for putting in so much effort and producing quality analysis that are useful and looking at complicated development proposals, but making sure that the commission can be reviewed and be considered and make an informed decision. So I'm very grateful to staff for all their hard work. And I wanted to let the commissioners know to please reserve November tenth for the calendar because we do anticipate having most likely three planning commission items for consideration that evening, one of which may most likely also include a general plan amendment for the Camarillo Beach Project. And then we're looking at some other development proposals, one potentially for Boys and Girls Club expansion and for a storage facility of the end of the video. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, do I want to clarify real quick? Joe, you said November tenth for the next planning commission meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure the date.
Okay. Do we have any further comments, questions from the commissioners? See, oh, go ahead, Commissioner Espinoza.
Yeah, I, you know, this project caps off a huge undertaking for the Springville Specific Plan. I think, you know, staff ought to be extremely proud of the work they've done over the years. I mean, this, a lot of this precedes myself and a couple of other commissioners, but really, to conclude with a quality proposal like was brought before us tonight is really something, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. Thank you so much, the community.
Nice.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Espinoza. We appreciate that. We think this will be a nice way to round out the entire specific plan and put the ball on all the finishing touches as it gets built out.
All right, Vice Chair Tomage?
Yes, I also would like to echo the comments about great quality work by the staff. We had two items tonight. One was fairly simple, fairly easy, but it did show a lot of work in working with the applicant and coming up with a project that I think enhances that area of the city. And then with respect to the, the change in the Springville Plan, that's a big, big deal of what happened. And I think that the, the staff working with the applicant did a marvelous job of really ironing out the details, answering the questions, and making sure that the interests of the city and the people of the city are well-served. And so my compliments to Jackie and her work on an excellent staff report, and, and also the whole staff for their work with the developer to, to get a project to us that is, I think, something we can all be proud of and something we don't have to hide our heads or anything else. This is a big deal, but it's a good deal. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Chairman Tomage. And also, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize the hard work of our Public Works colleagues in all of the various divisions, traffic, land development, water. They've all been instrumental in facilitating this application and collaborating with community development and applicant as well. It's great to have such talented people to work with.
Agreed.
I think I'd like to add to that, going all the way to the other, other end, when these units are built and people occupy them. I know of two residents of the senior facility that Mr. Hardgrave spoke about earlier. And in both cases, these are people who would be hard-pressed to find any place to live. And it's, it is a very beautiful community, and, and they are quite happy to be living there. So you have some satisfied customers, and, and that's due in large part to, to the hard work you folks have been putting in. So, thanks again. And if there aren't any further comments, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.